Thank you all for coming tonight. First item of business will be comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. The purpose of comments from citizens is to allow citizens to present information or raise an issue regarding items not on the agenda, or regarding agenda items that do not include a public hearing. A time limit of five minutes per citizen shall apply. I've asked the city recorder to utilize the light system so that the speaker will be informed as to their remaining time and so that we have consistency. As a general rule, this is not a time for an exchange of questions. However, at the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor can discuss or raise questions regarding something presented by a citizen. Please state your name and address into the mic when you make your comments. And we have, let's see, check to see if that's G9. We have one, Ann, it must be, I guess, for the museum. Come on up.
I'm Ann Hall, the Director of the North Lincoln County Historical Museum, which is located at 4907 Southwest Highway 101. And I'm speaking for the museum tonight, so I gave that address. And I have a group from the museum here, so we're all not speaking, I'm speaking for quite a few people that are here. What we wanted to do is give some feedback about our relationship, our past relationship, with the VCB, and especially in regards to its events programming, its leading with events programming. Some of you may know that we started out in the Taft area in what was the old City Hall. We inherited it when the City Hall moved here. And that building, old building, built in 1941, had a nice little local museum, but in 2005, we doubled its space, completely renovated it. And that was largely with the help of the Urban Renewal Agency, and grants, and fundraising, and a lot of things. And we thought, why don't we got that great building up, that we'd have just a lot of people coming in. It would be changed from a local history museum to a tourist attraction. And indeed, it did have an impact. That new building, in the summertime, brought people in. Both local people and people who were visiting would come into the museum much more in the summertime. But then, the fall season hit, and we experienced a real letdown in our numbers. Now, urban renewal had just been through Taft, but still, it was an area that people just don't go to. You know, it was very hard for us to bring people to a program that we had, or an exhibit. And even people in town would tell us, you know, "We've never been to the museum," or "We don't know where it is." And we advertised in the paper, and we tried to do everything we could to let people know what we were doing: posters, press releases, all kinds of those things. And nothing really worked. So we said, well, with our $200 marketing budget that year, we asked Sandy Thap for some help. And she came to a board meeting. And we said, "Sandy, what can we do? We have very little money for marketing. We really want to become a Lincoln City attraction, and we really want to be able to get people to come to some of our programs." And she said, "Well, as far as becoming a Lincoln City attraction, you're probably not going to be able to do that on your own." She said, "You know, to come from out of town for a one-hour program on a Saturday, you know, even if you take out a huge ad and spend lots of money, people are probably not going to do that." But what she suggested was that we start to work with the city, and with other organizations, and we all partner together, and we create citywide events. And we started with Antiques Week, which had already been going on. And we said, "Okay, let's do that." Because we're closed in January, we don't have any people coming to the museum in January. But in February, it was also pretty slow, even with Antiques Week. But we started partnering with the city, and we did a quilt exhibit every Antiques Week, and we did a new temporary exhibit, and we did programs. And we noticed right away, people were coming. Because it wasn't just our programming that they were looking at, they were looking at the entire Antiques Week, and choosing what they wanted to do, and then we were among them. So once they saw us on the city calendar, or wherever they saw the ad for Antiques Week, then they started coming. But still, they were saying, you know, "Boy, this is a great museum. It's the best-kept secret in town." And we were not trying to keep it as a secret. We were trying to let people know. So we kept building on that first year, and every year, we seemed to add a little bit more. There were Heritage Months, Native American History Month, Black History Month, Women History Month. And we weren't the only ones involved. The Cultural Center would do something, and maybe a business would do something, or maybe even the Culinary Center would have an event around this Heritage Month. So what we noticed is, we went from like, people coming, 20 people coming to a program, an educational program, to 60 people. And our capacity is about that, so we were getting above capacity. And a lot of people were coming that had never come before. Now, you take Black History Month, and you think, well, how many people are going to come for that? You'd be surprised how many people came from out of town, both African-Americans and all kinds of different races, for that program, because it was a special thing, but also, the city had done multiple things. So they didn't just come for the one program, they came for whatever was going on during that month. The same is true for the Native American History Month. We had Native Americans coming to the museum, both visiting the museum and coming for the particular exhibits and programs that were during that month. So it was very, very successful, and it wasn't easy. We built it up over time. That first year started slow, but with each new year, we seemed to add something. And also, the communication between our organization and the VCB improved. They had the staff, they had the ability to make things happen that we didn't have the staff or the money to do. But together, we could make something happen. And we really, really saw the results in terms of our attendance. It went way up in those shoulder months, when people are not just walking through town and discovering us, because they, you know, they walk past on the way to the art studio or down to the bay. So what we want to tell you is that this change to a new policy, which seems to be focused on for-profit businesses leading with city events, is a little scary to us. Because we don't see how we're going to be included in that, and we don't, we're not capable of leading those kinds of citywide events ourselves. And we've also had this momentum that we think maybe is going to pry out. Is that my time? So we're just hoping that if the policy does change, as it seems to be in the works, to change to create for-profit events rather than the city-led events, which we can participate in, then I would hope that there'd be some kind of mechanism next year for some feedback, to see whether that worked or not. Because, you know, if it doesn't work, and we just go along with it, I'd hate to see the VCB be blamed for something, you know, that, "Hey, this is a bad policy," when really, the policy that's been in place has been working very well.
Okay.
I'd like to just thank everyone. Thank you for all your help and support from the city and the VCB, because you've really been helpful to us.
Thank you. You are going to stay, I assume, for the discussion?
Sure.
Because some of your information seems to be less than accurate. So hopefully, you could stay and hear the discussion, and that might change your comments or thoughts, or concerns. Anybody?
Questions?
No questions? Okay. Anyone else who didn't sign up, this would be the opportunity to come forward. Seeing none. Move right along then to the Consent Agenda. And the Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda, these items are considered routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any counselor may request that an item be removed for separate discussion and action. The Consent Agenda consists of, number one, request of reading ordinances first by title only; number two, minutes of the meeting, May 14, 2012; number three, wastewater collections change order; number four, contract award wastewater treatment plan bio solids removal; number five, appointment to library board student Natalie Joy; number six, appointment city manager pro tem; number seven, resolution number 2012-13, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City ratifying and approving the intergovernmental agreement between State of Oregon, acting by and through its Department of Transportation, ODOT or agency, and the City of Lincoln City, related to consulting services to the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency for the future redevelopment of a publicly-owned site on Northwest 15th Street, Ocean Lake. Any items, desires to be pulled or removed?
Number two, please, Mr. Mayor.
Number two, certainly. Any others?
I move we approve the Consent Agenda, with the exception of item two.
Second? We have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, absent number two. With a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Mr. Narikas, number two?
On the minutes of meeting, May 14, Your Honor, under letter F, number nine, presentation, the third to the bottom line, actually, I'll start at the fourth, Mayor Anderson clarified that council will not, quote, "approve" the project, but will, quote, "accept" the project idea to be flushed out, working through existing processes, and cautioned the group to say that council approved the project. I think that should read, cautioned the group not to say that council approved the project. Is that your recollection, Mr. Mayor?
Correct. We weren't intending to approve the project from this bench, but we were in approval of the concept, as long as it went through the process. I look towards Counselor Ward, who was, is that, could you help us?
I think that that was...
Is that to check the concept, so just...
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, what project was it?
This is the bandstand...
Yes, that's my recall, because I was paying attention.
So it's just the insert of not, did you catch that, Kathy? So with that amendment to the minutes, would you be okay in approving the minutes?
Yes.
With a motion?
The move.
With a second?
Second.
We have a motion with amended minutes and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. No special order of business presentations. Now, we can get into VCC item recommendations regarding budget. Good to see you, VCC Committee, huh?
Yes. Dawn Bradamas, 3313 Northeast West Devils Lake Road in the city.
Sam Allen, 390 Seagrove Loop, Lening Beach.
Thank you for having us come, and let you know, since we are an advisory group, we do have a recommendation, and then we have a couple of points that we'd like to share with you. So we had a meeting on May the 14th.
Dawn, can you pull the, yeah, maybe bend that right into you?
Nose to nose.
I'm going to sit on my book.
Oh, Sam, no short jokes. We're on camera. So, in the first place, our committee was not comfortable in giving funds to for-profit events due to a lack of accountability. We had a long discussion at our last meeting, on May 14, at our VCC committee meeting. So we had our first recommendation from the May 14 meeting, I'm going to read, and then we have a second amendment to that this evening, because we just had a meeting today. So this is from our minutes, dated May 14, 2012.
Dawn, before you get started, could I just go for clarification? What you're speaking to is, when the Budget Committee approved and forwarded the budget to the City Council, they included an item in the VCB of a, I think was termed a corporate sponsor, or sponsoring events, somehow, named...
For profit, yes.
Named to be determined.
Yes.
And $100,000 was allocated for that, with an understanding that VCC slash VCB would work out the details of the accountability?
Correct.
Okay.
And it was, it was like a grant, like we do with the nonprofit grants. It was explained to us that it would be a grant process for profit. So anyway, so I will...
I just want the public also to know what you're speaking to, and make sure the council, so that's the line item that you're kind of talking about.
Correct, correct. It was a recommendation to our committee from the Budget Committee.
To do what?
That, what you're talking about, the $100,000. It was a recommendation from the Budget Committee to...
To the Lincoln City Council?
Correct.
In the budget, right.
Correct.
Okay. Sorry.
It's confusing. Assuming the fund concept was legal, is legal, the members of the VCC unanimously voted to recommend that the $100,000 removed from the VCB contingency, and placed in a for-profit event sponsorship fund by the Budget Committee to be returned to the contingency line item, and that $25,000 added to the nonprofit grant funds by the Budget Committee be removed from that fund and be used to fund $25,000 in advertising for July, August, and September We wanted to amend that recommendation to say, amend the recommendation from the May 14, 2012 meeting, to recommend that $50,000 of the $100,000 returned to contingency be available for marketing partnership, marketing partnerships, if needed, during the 2012-2013 budget year. Currently, the VCB has significant sums of money to do marketing partnerships right now, and they support the events through advertising. And the second item that we wanted to talk about, what, okay, the second one was that we really want to use the $25,000 that you were going to give us for the nonprofit grants. We wanted to use that money for advertising this summer. And normally, we don't advertise in the summer, but because of the last, since 2008 and the recession, they have done some advertising in the summer. And we feel the need to use that $25,000 out of contingency and use it for advertising, for July, August, and September. Normally, that's, you know, not allowed, because it's not off-season. Do you want to say anything?
Well, I was just going to clarify, part of our reasoning behind returning the $25,000 and sending it off to advertising versus putting it in the nonprofit grants is because we've never reached the $75,000 threshold we've already been given, and we've been doing this a lot of years. And since we haven't reached that point, we don't feel like that $25,000 is really necessary there, but could be better utilized for the city in other ways. So that's just a little point of clarification. Thank you for that.
That's why he's here. And then also, the other thing that we would like is, we would need guidelines from you for the quarterly report. We anticipate giving the report in October of 2012. That will be from July, August, and September. And we would need some guidelines on what you would like in the report. Any further questions?
Yeah, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Oh, so then we can ask questions and go from there. Let me take the guidelines easier. Feel free, we set up a meeting and talk off, you know, and go with that. I would hope the committee would also come up with a list, you know, of things that they think are appropriate, and so we could work together. Just set a time, and we can, you know, have a meeting, and I'd be glad to spend time with you there. Anybody else, anything on council as far as guidelines? What we do is work something up, and then run it by the council, just to see if that's all right?
Good.
Okay. I'm sure there's some questions, and I guess, understanding that, I think Sandy's got the next item, which includes a lot of this, so I don't know the timing, if it would be better to have, wait until Sandy kind of talks, and we get us all together, or, but are there questions directly of Dawn and Sam from council? Anybody?
No.
Okay. Name of the side?
Just a comment. I think that the fact that we've never, that they've never spent the $75,000, makes it pretty clear that it was overfunded. And take $25,000 out of that, and put it back to the, put them back to 50, and use it elsewhere for the advertising, I think that's fine.
You don't mind if I take a contrary opinion on that?
Not at all.
Because, as I recall, Mr. Counselor, the VCC Committee made a presentation to us in writing, and made these recommendations, that we start moving out of events. And so I would say, on the surface, it would say, why would I, if I were a nonprofit or anybody else, step up and do an event if VCB is doing them? I mean, when you, one thinks of the Heritage Weeks, and you go on and on and on, Muppets, or Muppets, Mush, Masters, thank you. I mean, so, I think what we're trying to do, what I heard VCC recommend to this council, was get ourselves out of the event business, except for, I think, four items, four events, and start embracing other entities to do that work. So the minute you, my belief, is the minute you say those words, I like to think about putting money where my mouth is. Doesn't mean you have to spend it. If there aren't apps, goes back into your bottom line and your reserve. Same thing with the other stuff. But, you know, it's kind of, we have other governments higher than us that make, you know, unfunded mandates, and, you know, I have a little trouble with that. So, on the surface, you know, it would say to the nonprofit community that you're open for business, you put another $25,000 in there to, and we're out of the business. We're not going to compete with you, so, just a thought. So that may be why it hasn't been funded, or applied for.
Mr. Mayor, we are, in actuality, trying to pass off the events that we've started to other for-profit or nonprofit organizations. We've been very successful so far with our nonprofit piece. The reason we didn't want to do the for-profit piece is because of the, all the logistics of handling it, the legalities of it, everything involved with it, where we're already utilizing dollars from our budget to partner with for-profit organizations, like the Antique Mall for, Antique Week, and things like that. And so by putting that $100,000 back in the contingency fund, we still have access to those dollars to partner with either profit or nonprofit.
Sam, would you mind sharing with us all that detail that's involved? Because you already have a mechanism to do the nonprofits.
Right. But we don't, but that mechanism for nonprofit is totally different from a for-profit organization.
Well, I don't know yet, because you haven't come up with criteria. And as far as I'm aware, the VCC doesn't do a lot of accounting. You rely on the city's finance department.
Right.
So, you know, I would look to the finance department to tell me that, you know, this is really overtaxing. So it kind of gets back to, right now, it's a concept, and if you could grab the concept. The concept for me is, are there events that benefit the entire city that aren't done, or aren't capable of being done by a nonprofit? If so, why can't the city be somehow involved in that event, through whatever means, a check, marketing, one in the, you know, who knows? So I'm, and I'm reading Sandy's write-up that comes after you, I think she alludes to that, because she's making a recommendation, which, you know, I think gets us there. So I guess I'm confused as to pick on Antique Week, for example, use that as an example. Why force the antique dealers to form a nonprofit, so that they can make application to get some money to do Antique Week? It seems to be a little bit onerous. Why not allow them a vehicle to make an application to the VCC to hire a coordinator, to, you know, get, buy some marketing, to do something, maybe tie into the VCB's existing marketing? Why do they have to form a nonprofit to do that? And that's, that would just be one example that I would have, you know, and we can think of others that would benefit bringing people to town. Use the one that's coming up in July, hoop it up. You know, it's not a nonprofit. If it works, it's going to bring a lot of people to town, the community benefits, the beds will be filled, CRT money will be rolling in. Why shouldn't Lincoln City's tag be on that in some way? So I'm afraid people have mistaken, you know, a word, or words, you know, what does he mean, whether I say corporate sponsor, or sponsor, or something, instead of find a way? And quite frankly, Sandy's write-up appears to say, "We're doing it now." So I'm, that's why I'm kind of missing, if we're doing it now, why don't we just formalize it a bit, and have the criteria, much like we did with the nonprofits? Here's the steps you've got to do, the kind of reporting, the rationale, the reasoning, you know, put it over here. You don't have to fund them next year if they don't deliver, same. So I'm really missing, and I'm hoping Sandy might be able to help us. So, you know, have I missed a connection?
We're talking about marketing partnerships, we're not talking about grants.
Well, I'm all, I figure everything costs money.
Right.
So, for me, it's money in a line item that's free to be spent. You guys tell me the best way, it's, at least that's the way I heard the Budget Committee talking and stuff, is there, we don't want to miss an opportunity, and we want to not force someone to create a nonprofit simply to get some assistance from the city to bring people to town.
And I think we're in agreement, I just think that we're talking in different circles in a sense.
I think so, too.
And that is that, we, like, the hoop it up is a great example, there's no reason we couldn't put some marketing dollars towards helping market that event, because it's bringing people to the city through this contingency fund, or the extra $50,000 in the contingency fund.
Or the $100,000.
But what we're trying to do as an advisory board is just not dole out a check to a for-profit organization that we don't have any control over.
Agreed. And that's why the arrangements, the criteria, was left in your hands.
So maybe we just haven't created the right criteria yet.
Yeah, because there isn't any, and, but I just want to make sure, and I think through this, you get the concept of, you know, I mean, I hear Sam, you saying you are in agreement, that, yeah, it makes a lot of sense. So maybe there's certain criteria that we'll use, where we will be of assistance. But I'm figuring, nothing's free, so you've got to have a fund ready to pay for, whatever it is.
But if we have marketing partnerships... But if we have marketing partnerships, the fund is already established through the VCB.
Maybe, so-
So that we didn't want to create a brand-new fund, and so that's what we were trying to do, that's what we were trying to do, giving back the 100,000, but having the ability to use 50,000 of it for marketing partnerships.
Again, if money not spent doesn't go away, it stays. So you have your contingency fund anyway. So I, and again, I think it makes, for me, it makes a nice statement that we're open for business.
So let me ask a question, Mr. Mayor. If, if the fund were to go into a for-profit fund where we would allocate grants like we do now for nonprofit, then would that money be accessible if we didn't grant it to any for-profit organizations? I mean, you say it stays there, but is it accessible?
Yeah. I guess, you know, I don't know if this is the place to work out all the details and we're going to, if we stay with the big picture and let those who are better at working details, you know, work it out, but, but my point, and that's why I was a little concerned with the previous speaker with Ann Hall and the museum and stuff, that there's a misconception of, where, and I think, but I don't want to work out the details.
Well, the museum has already, has come to us every year for the nonprofit.
Agreed.
And, and that funding still stays. And, and we have spent, the most I think we've ever spent in the nonprofit, out of the 75,000, has been about $62,000. So we've come close to that, but we've never, you know-
Obviously, you're not asking for enough, are they?
Evidently.
Ann? Did you hear that, Ann? You're not asking for enough?
Yeah, August 28th or 31st is the deadline for the next round, but-
Well, thank you, and I appreciate what the committee is doing, and that's what, I don't know that this is the forum to work out these kind of things, it really isn't. I much more would have appreciated a off-council meeting, time to sit down with you and, you know, say, what's your concept, so that we could, you know, do it out of the limelight, so to speak, and, but make sure you had the information and clarity.
We had a short window.
We always seem to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I, and I'm sure other council members would agree in thanking the visitors' convention committee for their conscientiousness. You know, I, I think this can yet work out, but it's, it's different. And some of the things you brought up, quite frankly, were on my mind when this was brought up in the way that it was. But I'm, I'm willing to keep my mind open to see that hopefully, it may not run smoothly initially, but hopefully it can reach a point where it does make sense. I think for me, initially, being on the council, I was hoping we could have a system that could measure expenses versus return and get a feeling for investing in things that make sense. And then somehow, and I'm not sure that I was ever asking for it, but a lot of things are being suggested to just be eliminated, or, or at least that, it was said like that. I'm not sure that that's what our intention was, or is. So, to the degree we can keep track of how money is being spent relative to what's coming back for that expenditure, that's kind of where I was initially, and I hope we land somewhere that can make everybody happy. And it's good for the viability, the economic viability of the entire community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much for bringing this forward. They got us warmed up, Sandy.
I have a memorandum in the packet for you, basically what I did. There was no clear message about who was supposed to figure this all out, and obviously, it's going to be a much longer process than we all anticipated. But what I did was to go explore what other similar kinds of programs might be available in Oregon, and, because I hadn't looked at that since we put together the nonprofit fund. And there are a few. This is, the only one that's this size, I mean, the 100,000 dollar fund, is, is Lane County, and it covers the whole county, not just, not just the city of Eugene. And they had some issues with it, and part of the concern that I hear from the VCC is the potential pressures, if you will, in the community that make them uncomfortable in making the kinds of decisions that are going to need to get made. And-
Mr. Mayor, Sandy, are you, are you down on your memo like on page two now?
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to follow you along.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting to. So I put in your memo some summaries of the programs that I bumped into, some of them were purely nonprofit funds like the one that we have in existence, and some of them were, were hybrids of profit and nonprofit. Lane County was, was, I suppose, that one and maybe Pendleton are the closest. What has happened with those funds is that they've had a lot of difficulties administering them. And part of that is because of that 70-30 split in the Oregon statute about how you can use money, and part of it's because of the, frankly, community pressures that you get when you have to make those kinds of decisions. And what I've heard from the VCC is that they're kind of uncomfortable making those decisions, and I understand that. Lane County's, there's not, the legal issue doesn't exist in Lane County because they took their fund, funding source, out of the 30% rather than out of the 70%, which is what we're looking at here, or at least I think we're looking at, although the city attorney may have a different opinion about that. And they wound up having to get the county commissioners involved to appoint a separate committee to make the decision about who gets what, and then to pay the economic development organization in Lane County $20,000 a year to administer the funds. And it used, actually, it started out being 40,000 a year, and it was reduced to 20,000. Pendleton has basically stopped doing theirs except for marketing partnerships, they've stopped just simply doing sponsorships. Again, the headaches were more than, than they were wanting to deal with. So when I, when I looked at that and looked at what the, the issues were, I was hard-pressed to try to develop any guidelines without having a pretty clear understanding of what the basic model of this is going to be. And so when I, when I looked at the budget committees having made the recommendations of 100,000 that would go to for-profit, or could go to for-profit businesses one way or another, then I had to look at, you know, what are the modeling choices for this? And to avoid the 70-30 problem, the best I could think of was to go to the marketing arm, because in that 70% of the funds, they have to go to either an entity that does tourism marketing, which would be like the VCB, or it has to go for marketing. And so if we did a marketing partnership with whatever amount of funds you all decide to do, whether it's 50, or 100, or zero, it would be probably cleaner to do it as a marketing partnership. The reality is that historically, the VCB has done it with both marketing and sort of non-marketing partnerships as things have come along. So for instance, we have from time to time, help people do, help for-profit organizations and nonprofits do mailings, we've helped them to do posters, we've helped them to do design work for their artwork, we've helped them to do social media promotions and so forth. So we've done a lot of that anyway. And in fact, I had put in the budget in the other bigger line items, some funds that I earmarked for myself to pay attention to, to help both profits and nonprofits. The reason we didn't do Hoop It Up, and frankly, the, well, there are two reasons we didn't do Hoop It Up, and these are the only two reasons we didn't do Hoop It Up. Hoop It Up is probably going to be a great thing, and it'll probably be a great thing to look at next year. But first of all, there was no agreement about whether or not the VCB should be doing any marketing in the summer, and that was a summer event. And secondly, it was in a different budget year, and it happens right after this budget year starts, so there was no time really to put that together. Had there been more time, had the circumstances been differently, probably what would have happened is that I would have sat down with Tanger and Chinook Winds, and we would have figured out what it was going to take for the three of us to make this happen. But that luxury wasn't there. So the only, the only concern, not the only concern I have, but one of the concerns I have about earmarking a large sum of money like that in a line item, and Mr. Hawker can maybe help me with this, or Debbie Mamonie can help me with this, is that question of, okay, if we set 100,000 in that line item for those kinds of activities, and nobody steps up to the plate, or 20,000 steps up to the plate, can that 80,000 be used for anything else in that budget year? I sure wouldn't touch it unless I got a clear understanding from somebody that we could touch it. So that's my concern, is overfunding something and then being stuck. The second concern I have, major concern I have, is how long is this going to take to put together? I mean, by the time we figure out what the model is, and I go back and get some guidelines done, and then we try to figure out who's, you know, what the requirements for accountability are going to be, and then we get it in place, and we put a funding period on it, and we advertise it and do it, it's going to be February. That's, and that's if the VCC stays completely, has enough members from time to time to have a quorum. And we are two members down now, we look at losing at least one or two more in November. I can see this all just grinding to a halt, too. The last year, the last fiscal year, the VCC did not have enough members to have a quorum for, I can't remember how many meetings, but it was close to half. So that, you know, those two things have to be addressed, I think, if we're going to do this.
Well, I'm not concerned about the budget. At very worst, we would have to have a budget amendment, but probably more than that, just coming to the council and saying, we've still got some money left here, would like to spend it in a different line item, it doesn't require a budget amendment because it's not going to unbalance that category, and you give a nod of the heads and we're done. At worst, it would require a simple resolution changing the budget. I don't, I don't really think that's going to happen unless we change categories from personnel to materials and supplies to capital, there's three, three categories. As long as we're okay on those three categories within budget, we don't have an issue. But of course, if we change the program that you envision, then we're going to want to come back to you and at least discuss it. As to getting something done, maybe it's something that just has to evolve a little bit, get it started, throw it out there for proposals, and refine it as we go. You can't have a perfect system, as we found out from the first time around with the nonprofits, until you try it out a little bit. And we found that, that our guidelines were too rigid, that we developed for, for the nonprofits, that we weren't getting people that could qualify, which is one of the reasons why a lot of years we didn't, weren't able to spend so much of the money. There was guidelines there that were just too difficult to meet. So I think it can be an evolutionary process, and I'm not too troubled by making it perfect right off the bat. So, yeah, it's, it's difficult, but, you know, that's our job.
Any questions?
I have a little bit of two cents, I'm not sure if this is the right place.
We can make it, so, go ahead.
I've been looking at the question of the origin of the funds, because once you identify a fund for a specific purpose, the question comes up whether the money going into that fund, the tax revenues, can be appropriately expended from that fund. When the voters approved the increase in tax from eight to nine and a half percent, the information that the city provided to the voters at the time was that the portion of that money that would be, could be used on tourism would be going in part to fund events, special events, and things supposed to put on by nonprofit organizations. So what's critical there is when we have to determine which funds can be used, we have to figure out exactly what was extended. In other words, not just the, the language of the ballot measure, but all the information that was given at the time. And it's, that, that's what we need to look at. So I've looked at that, you know, made, made my basic determination on that. What I have to look at a little bit more closely is the original tax, and, and what did the voters believe they were approving at the time, what did the city say? The city could have been silent, just said it was for general tourism purposes, but I need to investigate that a little bit more. So I think, to the extent David was saying, there needs to be some flexibility, I guess I encourage that, because even if you have an idea of what you want it to be, I'm not sure what those numbers are going to be, depending on what the legal answer is.
That's why we have law books, I know you'll find a way, you, I think, and I, I guess I'm, I'm most appreciative, and Sandy, you, in your write-up, seemed to lead me and lead us to a, something that could be done. And I think you made a recommendation, and you even called it partner, partnership marketing, or-
Yeah, I think it can be done.
Right.
Don't mistake me, I do think it can be done.
And that, that's what I, I'm really pleased to hear that, and not get hung up on, you know, words that I used, but, or the budget committee, but think bigger as to, you know, and I think, you know, how do we, how do we have more events and more things happening in Lincoln City that either entertain our guests, bring our guests, do all the things that we want to do? Without, you know, for me, anyway, without having large city personnel costs involved. So if we can offload it to others and take advantage of, in your case, great marketing buys and, and the kind of stuff that we've got going, great. But it does cost money. I mean, wouldn't you agree that, you know, there is some cost to adding on, doing more of events?
Oh, sure.
So, so we need some money set aside.
There is, and there's no question in my mind, but what the smaller organizations that might want to step up and do these events, the part that they can't do very effectively is marketing.
Correct.
Because it takes a lot.
You made, and you made an excellent point on that in the write-up, and I, that's, I appreciate it, because that is, you're exactly right, that's probably the harder part, and go. Were there other questions?
Mr. Mayor, just so I'm not misunderstanding, and I, I read Sandy's memo a couple of times, and then her last paragraph is actually the recommendation. And so you are saying that the spirit of the recommendation is a place that you would be satisfied with for right now, the last paragraph, the 100,000? And it involves, there's a kind of a safety valve in there in my mind of the city manager putting an expenditure up to 25,000.
Which he has now, yeah.
Which he has now. And so-
I don't know what your question is. Are your, is your question, am I comfortable with this recommendation?
Yes, yeah, is that what you're saying?
It was so nice to get to the recommendation after reading, you know, the couple pages. So I thought Sandy was taking me somewhere I didn't want to go. But I think Sandy's shown through this recommendation, one, and in fact, we're already doing this, is she says right above, you know, that, that sentence tells me, and actually, it's a concern, because not everybody knows we're already doing that, so here we, we have a chance to make it aware to for-profits and nonprofits that we have this ability, you're going to have to meet some kind of criteria for us to tap into it, or you to tap into us, or something. So I think we're, we're getting there, but it's, to me, it's much more transparent, because I don't, I don't know what the steps were in order to do it yesterday versus today. And all we'll be doing is shining a light on that.
We're not doing it to the extent that you-
Well, only, only by dollars, see, and forget the dollars, put 10,000 in there. I don't really care, because if we're doing it now, that means you have some criteria. You, you, and, you know, we, as Mr. Hawker has indicated, we got to start somewhere, so let's use that criteria, let's publish it, let's be aware, and that's kind of the, the starting point. And I, I would agree, for the VCC committee or anybody else, absent a guideline or criteria, then yeah, I'd have a lot of angst, too. But that's, that's part of the process. But that's, that's part of the process. We got to get to, who will we partner with, at what events, or what type of events, you know, where, that kind of stuff. So I, I guess I'm, either I'm really missing it, that how, it, it just doesn't seem that difficult. It's work. But I, I, I'm trying to get us to a wider market availability to partner with us. And I, I think that's where I hear you going as well.
Yeah, I understand that, and I agree with that. I think what's freaking everybody out, very frankly, is the size of that number, because that's a big change, combined with the concern about how much heat they're going to get making the decisions. I don't know how else to say it, except bluntly.
No, I, I appreciate your frankness, Sandy. But at the same time, in your memo, I think you address really well the issue of, of taking heat. Wish I could find it more quickly here, give me a moment, please. I would like to read this for the benefit of anybody who hasn't read this. I presume most people in the audience have. Hmm? The point of the VCB's doing events is to market Lincoln City. They have a springboard for marketing in the draw. In my opinion, the best, most easily administered, and probably least controversial and expensive model is marketing partnerships for the following reasons. One, we would not be giving money to a for-profit business, but rather leveraging the for-profits' efforts to create more marketing for the whole town. Two, community branding could be more easily maintained, developed, and promoted. Three, consistency in, quote, "the look," unquote, of Lincoln City advertising could be better maintained. Four, decision-makers would be in less controversial positions. I think that's true. Decisions could be made more quickly while retaining checks and balances. Six, conflicts of interest could be more easily avoided, agreed. Seven, we would be more assured of compliance with state law. Those are all great reasons in support of your proposal, and I, I support it wholeheartedly. I'd also like to point that, going further down your memo, just above your recommendation paragraph, sentences above that, it may be, it may even be possible to address partnerships on a case-by-case basis, rather than application and funding periods that delay response time or making funding impossible, because there's inadequate time to process the request. I'd love to see us be able to do that. I think that'd make it cleaner, faster, easier. Love to see that happen.
Yes. Other thoughts from council?
So I guess, in the budget that's to be approved tonight, is the $100,000. And what I heard from Mr. Hawker, though, that, well, one, we could amend it, I guess, to the dollar amount, but I didn't hear Mr. Hawker sharing the same kind of concern that we can't get to, you can't get to that funds for some, for something else. So if that's, I'm going to believe Mr. Hawker, that, that we wouldn't leave you high and dry if, if another opportunity raised. So then it, it really gets down to pushing back to the VCC to, and VCB to come up with guiding guidelines, criteria of when you would or wouldn't be a, a marketing partnership.
Using the marketing partnership mod is the only one.
Concept, yeah. I, I think if you can step back, for me, anyway, if, if you can step back and say you get, this is, this will assist us in the wider us bringing people to Lincoln City. I just don't want to exclude people, for-profits.
Sure, I understand.
So, you know, and, and I think you're, in your remarks, you said it, and I'm with you, if you and Tanger Mall and Chinook Winds sat together, boy, with the three of your stamps and participation in an event, I, I know, you know, I'm, I'm a lot more comfortable. And so I, I would, I want to free you up, I guess, to, and the VCC committee, to be able to do that, and that other organizations, for-profits, know that you have that capability, and what kind of tests they're going to have to make. And, and I would hope you'd be as stringent on them, you know, as far as accountability and results and all the kind of stuff, because that's going to dictate whether you'll fund them next year, or their next request, or kind of stuff, so.
It'll have to answer to you, too, so, you know.
Exactly.
Works that way.
Well, and it should. I mean, it's, I'm not uncomfortable with that and stuff. So does that, you know, council, through that discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I just, I had interpreted that in the recommendation thing, like if you had a line item for a certain amount of money, and say it wasn't all used, but you saw another place that kind of, I mean, it says with the approval of the city manager, I'd just take it to David and see.
What, what are you talking about?
Well, if, well, Sandy was worried about an amount of money being tied up with this purpose so specific, she couldn't.
Yeah, I, I think David expressed it, if, for example, halfway through the year, correct me, we only threw this event, you know, $10,000, $20,000 gets used. So there's $80,000 sitting in there, and an opportunity of a lifetime comes up, whether it's the debris issue, or something that Mark, that Sandy sees if she had some extra money, you know, could go after. That, that I would view David coming to the council and saying, we've got it, it's a little different than what you thought, you know, moving...
Yeah, absolutely.
Even if it was 25, I, I think so, I, I think we've got those flexibilities.
Yeah, we absolutely do.
I would hope we would.
I was just trying to set Sandy's mind at ease. Thank you.
Not just my mind.
I've got one, one more observation, Mr. Mayor. Just above that recommendation paragraph, again, Sandy, you've got a footnote number four, says we would have to watch the annual proposed fund amount carefully, and I presume that you're capable of doing that.
Sure. We just have to be mindful that because we're, this is partially in the red, if you will, it may not be able to stay that way year after year, even if there's demand for it.
Sure. Great, thank you.
And that would be the same for a nonprofit fund, or any of the funds, correct? I mean, it's...
Right.
Yeah, we're just watching. Okay. Sandy, while, while we've got you, the other discussion that the VCC brought forward, the idea of the nonprofit fund, you know, I think we moved that up to $100,000 as well, or the, the Budget Committee did. And I, I heard saying you would only had applications for $62,000. For me, the same item would fit there, if there's funds left over, or, you, and when we aren't on a regular basis using it for whatever reasons, you, it, it, that would have that same kind of flexibility, would it not?
The, the only part that doesn't have flexibility is if it's not appropriated. If it's in contingency or in any line item, I'm not troubled. If it's, if it's in, if it's not appropriated, meaning it's not in a line item, or it's not in contingency, then we have a limit on what we can do.
Okay. And then the final issue was around marketing in summer seasons?
Yeah.
Is that a policy? Because it's certainly not a budget issue. Where does that enter of council's domain?
Mr. Hawker probably is better to address that than me.
I'm not sure I understand that.
I, I think there's somewhere we often get the noise around, we don't do things, VCB, in, we do it in off-seasons. And one of the suggestions from VCC was to start advertising in the summer months.
Right. Keep advertising through, through the, what I heard, and it wasn't exactly said this way, keep advertising through the recession a little bit in the summer.
Right.
And, and we have been doing that the last couple of years.
Right.
And the question, I'm sorry, the question was?
No, that's what I, that's what I wanted to firm, so I don't know what would be different. Because I, too, thought we were doing that, and I was just trying to get it.
Yeah, we are to some extent. What I understood, the VCC was just simply saying, if we don't need it in the nonprofit fund, why don't we just add that to what already is happening in the summer? Because there's concern out there about the summers, and legitimately so.
Okay.
So the direction is that I should go back with that model of a marketing partnership in mind, and bring back to you some guidelines and procedures?
Right.
Right? Okay.
So the, that you're comfortable, where it's going to go, criteria, that kind of stuff, and?
Okay. Okay. And before I run away, NBC's coming to town the 23rd and the 24th of June to film the kite festival, so everybody dust and vacuum, please.
And sunshine and wind?
I'm sorry?
Sunshine and wind?
Not too much wind, just the right amount of wind, sunshine, and everybody, any strange face you see that you've never seen before, smile big, because it might be somebody from NBC.
Nice job. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm going to need the projector on, if you can hear that in the, the back room. Well, we're waiting for that to light up. I just, could I move on to the next item?
You bet.
It'll only take a minute. Most of these items are pretty, pretty short. First quarter transit room tax, we have not reported final numbers to the council. And I want to do so now. We get, as you know, we get reports quarterly, a month, beginning a month after the quarter ends, the first quarter, of course, January, February, March. So in May, we start, we, we get the, start getting those reports. We get some stragglers, and so that continually is revised until, really about six weeks after that close. Anyway, for, and we, we get the data reported monthly, even though it's submitted quarterly. So for January, our transit room tax, our gross room rentals were down 4.7%. That's a, that's a very small month. February, which is a much larger month, was up 7.5%. And March was up, which is even a greater month, was up 8%. Overall, the first quarter compared to last year was up 4.82%. So that's marginally good news. Anything, anything approaching 5% is, is relatively good news. Of course, it's a combination of the economy and weather, and, I, I thought you'd want to know that.
That was 4. what, Mr. Hawker?
8.2. 4.82%.
Thank you.
And that was gross room rent?
First...
Gross room.
Yeah, and what?
Second two, push, push the second two buttons, or they won't see me at all.
Mm-hmm.
Which is okay. That's actually okay. Yeah. I think so. No, the second, the second and third button. There we go. I'm sorry, where was I?
We were talking about gross room rent, rather than PRT.
Okay, that's different than transit room tax received, because we do have some delinquency. And hopefully, we, almost assuredly, we ultimately collect that. There is rare circumstance where we, where in a bankruptcy where we may not. But Debbie, do you want to comment on what we have in motion in order to collect that?
If the delinquency gets to a certain point where, where we get concerned, we do notify the entity and start placing liens to try to protect that outstanding receivable.
So, need to speak up a little bit more, but lien, we do place liens on the property, and that, that's a, that generally gets the money sooner or later, with interest.
So this 4.82 figure is gross room rental?
That's correct. Most there on streaming video, and streaming video, for those who are not familiar with it, is a way to get video through the internet, rather than, right now, our only broadcast media is Channel 4 Lincoln City Charter Communications. That doesn't serve everybody. Plus, we, we do it live, and we re-broadcast that two or three times, so that may not fit everybody's schedule, if they want to go back and look at, at a different time, and they didn't think to record the meeting, et cetera. So we've been working on, on streaming video, and it's just partially up, and I'm, I'll explain that in a minute. If you go into, into Lincoln City, this is our, our front page, our current front page, that's under redesign right now, and it'll change shortly. But if you go under the front page and pick Public Meetings Calendar, and go to the bottom of that page, this is just a temporary link, see Council and Planning Commission Video, click on that, and here's what'll come up. And it says live at the top, and that's the part that isn't yet working. We can't yet broadcast, there's a firewall issue between us and our supplier that is not letting us broadcast it live. But as soon as the meeting's over, as I'll try to demonstrate here, Urban Renewal, the meeting we just had earlier tonight. So that was our, our Urban Renewal meeting. And anybody can pull this up, and you can jump ahead, and this should work, and it's not, and I don't know why it's not working, we didn't get it marked properly, but by tomorrow we will. You can click on any of these bold-faced agenda items, and it'll jump right to that. So tomorrow, if you want to look at this video, or the video from the council meeting, because hopefully Kathy has been marking this as we go through, you can just click on the bold-face item, and it'll take you right to that. So if you don't have a lot of time and energy and interest, you don't have to watch a three-hour meeting. You can watch the part that you really want to see.
That's great. Oh, boy.
And we'll archive these for a period of time. Probably a quarter's worth, you know, three months' worth of meetings, something like that. There's, there is a space limitation. We'll always have it available on media at City Hall, but we probably won't have a year or two. We do have audio on for more than a year. So, anyway, I didn't mean to be playing the audio here. And you can do a full screen. One thing it's going to probably ask you to do is, is this good entertainment value? Let me get off of this, oh, we just keep seeing Kurt there, and he went home. There's Gary. So, it's probably going to ask you, if you don't already have it downloaded, in order to make that link work with the agenda, so that you can click on the agenda item, and it jumps to that, you're going to have to download something called Silverlight, Microsoft Silverlight. It's a safe program, it's done by Microsoft, it only takes, oh, 20 seconds or 30 seconds to download and install, you have to install it. And, and there's a link right on, on that, if I can get out of here, and get back there, I might be able to see it. Yeah, it says, click here, Microsoft Player, click here to install. That takes you to their site, install that one time, and it's used for other things, too. So it's useful to have on your computer. Anyway, I think this is going to be a great tool for people who want to say, what really happened on that item? Instead of just the third rumor that they heard, what really happened? And it's easier for me, at least, to watch a video and listen to the sound than it is just listen to audio. So there it is, and, and we'll get this live feed working here, hopefully by the next meeting.
Boy, that's great. That's, that's a nice addition. That's, that's a nice addition.
Workforce Affordable Housing Program. We had a workshop, I think it was about an hour and a half, two hours, on last Tuesday, June 5th, at 2:00, and we went through, the memo that's in the packet, actually was an early edition of that memo, and I revise it somewhat, from what I heard at that workshop. And let me, just in, in a couple of minutes, because we discussed this at length in, in the workshop, and also, the memo, I think, is fairly comprehensive, so, and I know we have a lot more on the agenda tonight, so I'll make it pretty short. We have, and by the way, there was a PowerPoint at that workshop that is maybe useful, if anybody wants a copy of that, I'm happy to send it to them. In a nutshell, we've accumulated $678,000 in cash to, for our Workforce Affordable Housing Fund, and that came from developer contributions and the sale of property to Buy Mart, and, and so on. We have land assets valued at about $375,000, and we have long-term notes receivable of $165,000, I don't think that was in the prior memo. So, the question is, what can we do with those assets to best have a viable, long-term, affordable workforce housing program? To start with, our median income in Lincoln City is, is very low. Our, our family median income is, is quite a bit lower than, than the state. It's lower, a lot lower than Newport, it's lower than the county as a whole. And yet, land and buildings are fairly expensive on the coast. We have a higher cost of living than a lot of areas of the state and nation. So, affordable housing can be a very important issue to the community. We saw a couple of years ago, before the housing prices started to go down, very, just by way of example, this, and this isn't all about the city workforce, this is, but that's one element of it. The city really couldn't hire people that could afford to live in the city. We went through quite a few hires and weren't able to keep hardly anybody living in the city. What that means for the city, and this is also true for other employers, is, is our critical workforce, a little bit more than half, excuse me, about half of our critical workforce lives outside zip code 97367. That means in a disaster, or in an emergency where we have to have quick response, at best, we're going to see 50% of our workers. I think you're going to see similar problems, hiring problems with a hospital, with a school district, with other major employers of, of the city. And so, when the housing prices rebound, and we start seeing this escalation that we were seeing before, this problem's going to be right in the middle of, of our policy issues again. So, what can we do now to make, make, to give us some opportunities for the future? The objectives that I suggest should be to provide as much workforce housing as possible for the long term, to keep the risk of loss of city money low, to reduce barriers to hiring and retaining a skilled workforce for both the city government and for others, and to encourage city employees, employer, employees and other critical workers to live in the city or very near the city. The recommendations, after going through a lot of different options, the, the recommendations I made were, were three recommendations. One is to reserve $100,000 to $140,000 of our housing funds for short-term loans for groups like Lincoln Community Land Trust, perhaps Habitat for Humanity, or, or some other program. The Lincoln Community Land Trust is viable, it's up and running, and it's already doing some things, and I think that's probably the, the program that has the capability of making a big difference over time. But that's not the only program. Maintain, number two, maintain an inventory of at least three housing units to be rented to city employees, either as long-term or transitional. We currently have three housing units, and this program has been very effective, particularly when we're relocating employees to Lincoln City. There's some positions, or actually a number of positions, that we can't hire locally. They're very specialized, very high-skill level positions that, water treatment plant operator. You're not going to find many water treatment plant operators in Lincoln City that have, have the certifications. By way of example, we have three of those housing units, and the transitional housing that we've done has already allowed two employees to rent six or seven months here, look for a house that they could afford in the city, go through the, the extensive process of buying a house now. It takes, takes a while to buy a house with all the new, the new requirements, et cetera. And, and both of them were able to buy houses within the city, close, fairly close to City Hall. And we were collecting rent. And the last, and the largest recommendation, is to invest about $550,000 of our, of our cash in land for future development. And that could be done by the Lincoln Community Land Trust, by Habitat, by private contractor, number of different housing programs. It, it gives us a lot of flexibility. Land prices are low right now, we have the cash, it's sitting in the bank, earning six-tenths of a percent interest. We're probably going to do better at that in the appreciation we're going to see with the land. Land can be put into a permanent bank to where it, it will be taken out of the equation on future purchases by, if a house, for example, is billed on it by the land trust, that house is sold on a long-term lease of the land, the land is not part of the equation. So, we keep the land cost out of housing for the long term. In order to do this, we would advertise and invite proposals from landowners and develop criteria, I've given you some of those criteria already. Evaluate all the land that comes in for consideration, and come back to council with that evaluation, and see where you'd like to go. So, those are the three recommendations that I'm making to the council that we discussed at the workshop.
Questions, Mr. Hawker? Is a, your point of clarity, again, for the public, is that the funds that we have set aside are strictly designated for housing. Is that fair?
Well, they've been designated for housing, yes.
They've been designated for housing, so we've set it aside for, from different revenue sources, as you've indicated, and, and want to stay in a housing arena, again, because it had, as your point, I think, was, the cost of housing has been a goal or a concern for councils, this one and past, of affordability aspect.
Yes, yeah, and it's not so much right now. I don't mean to come tonight and pretend that we're facing a housing crisis. I think the crisis is more, to be honest with you, in the rental market than it is in, in the purchase market. And that's why I suggest that we maintain three, at least three units for, for city employees, and if they're not used by city employees, make them available to other employers, like the hospital, like the school district, et cetera, community college, whatever, public first, or essential first, and then put them on the open market if they're not rented any other way.
Now, we did have a little discussion of maybe evaluating the three that we currently have, and turning, maybe modernizing, buying something more modern.
I, I would love to, to see, in the long term, we can't continue the program that we have, or at least all of the program, because two of the three units, housing units, are dated, will require a fair amount of maintenance, the kind that I don't want the city to have to deal with over the long term. So, yeah, and over time, I'd like to see them liquidated, at least two of those liquidated, maybe all three, and go to something more modern, more economical to maintain and take care of.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
One of the three was purchased for a possible other purpose.
Right.
So, we don't want to sell that one, right?
Yes, it'll be sold. It'll be sold to the Lincoln Square, or the Facilities Fund, because it was bought for parking. And when we're ready to either sell it, or to build parking, whichever comes first, we would sell it to a different fund. And that's something that, we have other, we have city properties with designated funds, where they belong to different funds. We operate 30-some different funds, and each one really is a separate business unit. And if an asset belongs to, for example, Lincoln, Lincoln Square Fund, which owns a certain property, if it's sold, it has to come to that fund, okay? Because we do keep strict accounting on, on our assets. So, yes, we do quote "sell" land to ourselves. It, it's not a deed transfer or anything like that, it's, it's, it's an internal thing that you would approve.
The other of the land, the idea of the land banking, be another term or concept, to, to try to capture real estate now at a reasonable price, to give us some flexibility into the future housing. So, we, through this process, would be welcoming, soliciting offers to purchase?
Yes.
And, and that would be, do we, we market that, or we advertise, or?
We're going to, we would, the plan right now is, is, A, we would send a letter of invitation to every Realtor that we know of that does business in Lincoln City. We would run a couple of quarter-page ads in the NewsGuard, and we would identify landholders that we thought might have land that they're trying to get rid of, and notify them directly. So, but part of it is right, right here. Look for, if you approve this, if you give me a nod of the head tonight, and again, you're not approving the purchase, or the sale, you're just saying, this program looks good so far, just keep going with it, and, and we would. Then we would run an advertisement, and the next available wouldn't be this Wednesday. The following Wednesday, there would be an advertisement in the, in the NewsGuard available to everyone. And we'll have a deadline date on that, because we can't hold this open forever. We want to get all the, the proposals in, and then evaluate them all together.
Sounds good. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
And, and another advantage in the offering of that property to the city is that you can negotiate a donation to the city, and thus have a good tax write-off, and then the city benefits by the lesser price that the property would normally bring. So, it's a real opportunity all the way.
Yeah, we're certainly qualified, that if you sell to the city at under value, you have the opportunity, you and your own appraiser and your own tax accountant have the opportunity to take a nice write-off.
That's a good point, Roger. That's a good point.
So, other, other questions? Then this would be the time that, you know, how do you feel about the recommendation, and want to proceed, direct City Manager to proceed with the concept and his recommendation as outlined? You all?
Mr. Mayor, I, I recommend that we approve. Workforce Housing Plan, Workforce Housing Program outlined by the City Manager.
I second it.
Any discussion? You all right? And?
I do have a comment. I'd like to thank Mr. Hawker for this far-sighted, proactive plan for addressing a serious issue affecting our Lincoln City workforce. Thank you, Mr. Hawker.
It's a, it's a team effort, as any, anything like this is.
We have a motion to approve, or to move ahead with the housing plan as proposed, with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of quick items here, if I may. I've, I've sent Council on email, saying, we'd sure like to give you a tour of two facilities. One is the progress at the wastewater plant, which is, you know, a $7 million investment that we're making, and it's in progress, take about an hour there. And the second would be the new wastewater collections shop building, it would take a good half an hour or so. And my recommendation was for a Tuesday, it seems to fit a lot of calendars the best, either tomorrow afternoon, or the following Tuesday, again, if it's not raining, or raining the day before, because the wastewater plant, I don't want you needing to walk through hip-deep mud. So, that one would be weather permitting. Tomorrow looks good. We have one council member that I know can't make it tomorrow. Probably, I was just going to say 2:00, meet here, if, either one. So, which one works best, or do we have to go out further than the next two Tuesdays?
Tomorrow, the 12th, works?
Works for me.
Works for me, too?
Yep.
It doesn't work for one. Would the following Tuesday work for everyone?
No, the following Tuesday, we're working on a, some ODOT meetings.
Okay, then, then the one that can't make it tomorrow, I'll arrange to have a mini special tour. About that.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would not be available tomorrow, but I, I don't want to hold up the...
Then I'll have a mini for two of them.
No, I, I've seen the city shop building, and it's very impressive, and I can go to the sewer plant sometime when I, when I'm not bothering anyone.
Then, then should we plan on tomorrow at, at 2:00, at the rooftop? We'll have transportation for you.
Sounds great. Thank you. That'd be helpful.
I may or may not be along, it'll depend on what's waiting on my desk tomorrow morning. But you'll be in capable hands either way. Come June 30th, we're going to have four vacancies on our library board, and I'm just throwing that out now, because it would sure be nice to see some applicants. One of those can be from the UGB outside the city, three need to be city residents. It's an important board.
It is. And Councilor Nricus serves on that board on, on behalf of the council. And for those listening, calculated that it's an hour a month dedication, so it's dealing with policy issues. So, it's not one where you got to, you work with books and stack, they're not going to put you to child labor or anything, but would, would need abilities, and Councilor Nricus, it really is a policy helping the staff, library staff, with policy decisions and observations?
Yes, it is.
And is an hour a month realistic?
For, for most of the year, it is, and we've just finished our, our five-year plan, so that won't be coming up for another five years.
Clear sailing. So, yeah, there's no reason.
And I think it's fun. It's, it's, it's a good environment, it's a positive, nice function that the city does, and it would just be nice for people to get involved in it. Two more real quick items. We had a rumor circulating around, I don't know how broad it is, and I don't like to repeat a lot of rumors, but this one deserves to be stopped, that during a weekend fire, the fire department, this is a rumor, don't quote me on this, the fire department had trouble opening one of our hydrants. We checked with the fire department, the fire marshal, Doug Kerr, and that was not the case, that's just a rumor that's going around. We have about 900 hydrants in the city, and in our service area, that they check and exercise on a regular basis, and again, there was no problem opening that hydrant. I just wanted to mention that, because that's the kind of rumor that can be a little bit destructive. And the final thing is, when you leave tonight, I'm going to hand you something we got from the League of Cities, and I'm going to ask you to spend 10 or 15 minutes with, if you have time, and, because it's going to be on the next council meeting. They have asked the cities to identify the four top legislative... to identify the four top legislative priorities of the city council. So there's 19 things that they're asking you to pick four of. And with seven members and 19 items, I'm trying to do the math. And that calculates to me to be about a three-hour meeting. So the alternative is, I'm gonna ask each of you that have time to mark seven items on that, seven of the 19. Get them to Kathy before the next meeting and she'll do one of those things like Kurt did. And we'll just put it on the consent agenda or on the regular agenda, hopefully not to take a lot of time. They are our lobbying group. They're very effective and they take the recommendations of the cities very seriously as to which items to pursue. So I'll hand it out to you in paper form. If you need it in digital form, just ask Kathy. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joan?
No, nothing.
Any questions of either Joan or Mr. Hawker from council? All right, thank you. We move into the public hearing aspect now. And we have, the first public hearing is a continuation. Villages at Cascade Head, Rock Creek Village, hearing to review a planning commission decision approving a two-year extension of the land use approvals with conditions. We opened this in March 12th and continued it to June 11th. And the request now is to continuance until June 25th, 2012, at this location, 6:00 PM. Any problems?
Do you need a motion to continue there?
Yes, you need a motion to continue.
I would move that we continue the public hearing on the villages at Cascade Head, Rock Creek Village. Second through the 25th.
All right, we have a motion with a second to approve the continuance request to June 25th, 2012, this location at 6:00 PM. That being the villages at Cascade Head. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Thank you. Next public hearing.
Well, do we want to make that part of meeting?
I just wanted to be able to announce it.
We don't have a time certain yet for... We're talking about a tour for the council and for the news media and I guess anybody else that would fit on the bus of the villages. We have not yet permission. We do have permission? We have access permission?
Yes.
Okay. We didn't have that as of this meeting agenda. So do we want that as part of the public hearing or not?
It's not intended to be part of the hearing. It's intended to be just a tour so the city council can see or ask, I guess, basically just look at the site because you are probably going to be discussing the project regarding the public infrastructure, what's been completed, what remains to be completed. And I'm assuming you might have questions. My hope is that the questions from the tour you'll bring back and put on the record at the hearing that night. The tour is basically to see it. And if the owner wants to come along, the owner is welcome to do that as well. They'll be invited. I believe if the city council has permission that if a member of the public wants to tag along, that they could do that as well. But I don't know what the status is of the notice that will go out. We don't have a set time yet.
So if it's not part of the hearing, then we don't... We would prefer not to set a time right now because, A, we don't know if we're gonna have an executive session. If we don't have an executive session, we're gonna start the... Well, we're gonna start the urban renewal meeting a half an hour early at 4:30. We probably ought to figure an hour and a half minimum, travel time and tour time. So that would be roughly 3:00 if we don't have an executive session. If we do, then we'd have to bump that up just a little bit more. We're gonna try not to have an executive session unless there's something pressing. But we'll get back to you on the tour time.
And so we don't need to do anything further from here, from this platform?
Okay, we're good.
Great. Public hearing to receive comments on resolution number 2012-10, proposing adopt a supplemental budget. Is there no specific language that we need to offer up, Joan Hunt, as a public hearing on this instance?
If I have the right one, this is... This is to close out the police fund in the current year and move it to the general fund, which is what we proposed in the next year's budget. In order to be able to publish the history of this year alongside of next year's budget, we would need to actually make that move for this year.
So these three items are all, have all been noticed as public hearings. So when you open them, I think it's just to ask if any member of the public wishes to comment on that resolution.
That'd be great. Would be, now would be the time then to have public comment? Hearing none. Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Then entertain a motion to approve resolution number 201...
Actually, I think the resolutions are all on at the end.
This is just a public hearing.
Just whip through those public hearings.
All right. Then next public hearing item is to receive citizens' comments on resolution number 2012-11, proposing to declare the city's election to receive state revenues. And that was... We talked about it, the Budget Committee.
Yeah, the state shared revenues are scheduled to, are recommended to be and approved to be placed in the general fund and spent as other general fund monies would be spent.
Any public comment regarding taking state revenue? Hearing none. Public hearing open to receive citizens' comments on resolution number 2012-12, proposing the adoption of the 2012-2013 budget. And that would be the budget as submitted from the Budget Committee. Any comments from public? Hearing none.
Your Honor, I think there's a misprint on the printed copy of the agenda. Number 17 describes this as 2012-2012 budget.
Right. But I said 13 verbally?
13, thank you.
Thank you, though. All right, no questions? Then moving on, do we close the public hearings?
So moved.
With a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Going to resolutions. Resolution number 2012-09, a resolution authorizing directing budget transfers for the city of Lincoln City, Oregon in the 2011-2012 fiscal year budget. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Second.
There's a motion with a second to approve resolution number 2012-09. Discussion?
Mayor, this was not subject to a public hearing. And I can talk about it as much or as little as you want me to.
But highlights?
Okay. I'll try to do it real quick. In building inspection, we're going to overrun personnel item by $5,000 because of training, intended training of a new employee. That may not occur, but if we have some time, we will do it. In finance, this year, we had the pre-audit work done by our auditor TKW done in the current fiscal year rather than after the books were closed. And so we had an unanticipated expense this year. But of course, next year's expense will be that much less, and that's $15,000. Recreation Department... And by the way, the general fund is gonna under-run. And these departments largely are going to under-run. But if a category runs over, we want to deal with it. And the recreation department, we had, we are experiencing an extended sick leave by one of our full-time critical staff members. And we have to go to part-time to replace that, and that'll be an overrun of about $5,000. Lincoln Square Personnel is gonna overrun because of overtime and vacation cash, cash out about $6,000. Government Access Fund, $2,400 funded from the contingency, which is some software maintenance that we didn't anticipate with the streaming video and the streaming video costs of setting up, et cetera. Street Operations Fund, here's a big one. Street lighting, $20,000. This came as a result of a multi-year audit that Civic Power did. They didn't know where all the streetlights were that they were taking care of and paying for the cost of. We pay so much a month for each streetlight. They started this audit a couple of years ago. I guess they finally completed it and found a whole bunch more streetlights than they thought we were, than we had. And it's $20,000. That's a budget, that's a serious budget issue. We're gonna try to go through every one of those streetlights and make sure that we need every one of them and see if there's any that we can cut back on. Long-term, of course, we're looking for them to have an additional tariff for LED lighting that would be a lot less expensive because of energy and bulb changing. But that one really concerns me a lot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
When you said $20,000, it would just be a percentage of that on a yearly basis, right? Like three or four years?
No, that's one year.
That's $20,000 a year?
I think that's one year, isn't it, Alila? That's one year. That's... Vehicle repair and operation in the street apartment, greater, street grader tires, a pretty expensive pieces of rubber, $7,000. Again, that, the street operating funds budget is gonna be $15,000 under overall, but that category is gonna overrun. Street capital fund, $7,000 for the overlay overrun. Again, it's running way under budget overall. Water Operations Fund Personnel, $30,000. This is mostly on call pay that we can't ever predict how much of it. It does decrease the vacation that's accumulated. So on the balance sheet, it's not that kind of expense, but on a budgetary basis, it is. Other equipment, $10,000. And again, the Water Operation Fund is estimated to under-run $86,000. So again, it's a category, not an overrun of the fund. And Wastewater Operations Fund, $69,000, which we expect to be funded out of contingency and FEMA reimbursement for storm-related expenses. That's it, kind of in a nutshell. I kinda went through it in a hurry.
It gives a flavor.
Is there any good news?
Yeah, the good news is that almost every fund of the city is under-running the budget. Even though we're coming in with budget transfers to say personnel over-run, but this under-run.
Right.
So there's very few situations where the fund is overrunning. I'm not too troubled by, I mean, we do the quarterly financial statements. We look at this pretty carefully. We estimated most of these in the budget that you've already seen in the current year. You've seen most of this already. The funds are under-running. We're on sound financial basis. I'm not troubled by it.
That's good news.
Other questions? None? We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2012-09. Is this a roll? Roll call?
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norikas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 2012-10, a resolution adopting supplemental budget of the city of Lincoln City, Oregon for the fiscal year 2011-2012, as approved by the city council and making appropriations. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion with a second to approve resolution number 2012-10. Can you go roll call?
Norikas.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 2012-11, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion to approve with a second to approve resolution number 2012-11. Roll call, please.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norikas.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And resolution number 2012-12, adopting the budget. Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the budget. Resolution number 2012-12.
Then with a second? Okay, we have a motion to approve with a second, resolution number 2012-12. Roll call, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
And Norikas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have one ordinance in front of us, ordinance for approval. Ordinance number 2012-03, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending municipal code, chapter 10-20, and ordinance number 2005-12 in regulating the licensing and operation of the, of taxi cab businesses, operators and drivers. We saw this a month ago or so, a draft. And Councilor Sprague, you raised a question on the insurance and agreed to work with council and police chief to make sure...
And we did meet and had a good meeting, during which we ended up with an amendment to the ordinance as it was presented. Particularly, it boils down to two or three different changes. One is that the amount of insurance required for the commercial auto portion of the ordinance was at $500,000 and we felt that was low. So we suggested and we have approved, not approved, but the ordinance shows a million dollars for the commercial auto. And then the ordinance, the previous ordinance required a business insurance, which basically means if you have an office someplace, you were required to carry insurance on the building or in the contents or in the liability for the premises. And that really didn't, wasn't anything necessary as far as the operation of taxis. And so there would be an increase, a slight increase probably in raising the limits on the commercial auto from $500,000 to a million. But then that cost of that will be almost erased by the not having to have the other business insurance. So the impact will be slight. And I think that we're properly covering the exposure.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm curious, after our last meeting, some of the concerns that were brought to me that I voiced. I've been, I believe, Mr. Hawker, you suggested... me, that I voiced, I've been, I believe, Mr. Hocker, you suggested that, that some of those companies bring you information. I'm curious if anybody ever brought you anything. I did get back to some of them, and suggest they do so. So, I'm wondering if, if perhaps the changes made were sufficient. I did give everybody that had reached out to me a heads-up that this was occurring tonight, and I don't see anybody here tonight, so I'm, I'm wondering if, nobody's heard anything, if it maybe isn't the burden that was originally...
Well, I think it may have been, and, and now it's straightened out.
Right, exactly. Exactly. Which I'm grateful for.
And for bringing it up, so appreciate everybody's work on this. Any other questions that anybody has regarding this ordinance? With that, then, certainly entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2012-03.
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve ordinance, and with a second, ordinance number 2012-03. Roll call, please.
Norikis. Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you again, Counselor Sprague and Counselor Ward, for bringing up the issues of the people and working out. Thank you both. We now have, this is the time for citizens' comments. Another opportunity to voice an opinion or observations. Please come forward. Wait till you get up here. We've got to get you on the mic. And just, you have to speak in close, and just your name and address would be great.
Yes, I am Alari York. My address is 1311 Northwest 15. And I want to, I'm here to squelch a rumor. The rumor is, the fire on Saturday evening, the fire hydrant is not a rumor. They did have a problem with it. I was from, out from you to me, I did observe. It took three people to get that hydrant going.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. That's contrary to what we heard from the fire folks, but...
We'll, we'll pass that along again to, we, we did inquire...
First issue I noticed, they did have a problem with the rain. Second, when the hydrant was open, there was a delay with the water flow, plus when the water flow did come, I did notice it was a very dark color, which to me tells me the hydrant has not been tested.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming forward. Other comments from folks present? Hearing none? Then, go down the line with counselors. Any wrap-up comments?
I don't think so.
I don't either.
Now, gentlemen, it's been an awful long time since we've had this session, so you've, you've got to have something. You know, vacation trips, photos, something. Counselor Quant?
Aren't we still taking applications for the wards?
We are. What, what do you want to say about that?
I just want to make sure you, you got it covered?
Okay.
Okay. You're the one with the golden tongue.
Counselor Ward?
I, I don't have anything. I know. Amazing.
It is. Counselor?
No, thank you, Mayor. I, I would like to hear something from Gordy, though. I've been, I've been with Gordy since 4:00 this afternoon, and he hasn't said one word.
It's all right. We'll, we'll get him.
Okay.
Counselor Norikis?
Nothing, thank you.
Gosh, you guys. Doesn't it seem like it's been a long time since we've been? Okay, not just my imagination, but Counselor Quant, you're, you're exactly right. There is a, an election this year, November, three city council positions, one in each ward. You know, and I, I don't know if any of the sitting counselors have picked up and returned their petitions, but we'd certainly welcome any and all folks, citizens, to pick up those applications. They can get it from the city clerk, a nice folder, three-ring binder with all the rules put forth, and a simple petition form of 25 registered voters saying they support the idea of you getting on the ballot. They don't have to say they support you, but we want some candidates for city council. Also...
Mayor, excuse me, I, I have picked up the book.
Notice I, you know, none have returned, so, you know, anybody can pick up.
I'm still reading that thing, it's that thick.
And don't scare away the candidates.
Well, your honor, I would like to say that it, it looks more intimidating than it is.
I know. I was just kidding.
Those are two gentlemen that we know have picked up their books and they've started reading, so... The other thing I do want, on a serious note, not that that wasn't, but there is a need. We talked earlier about the library board committee, and that really is a need to fill. The best candidates certainly would be users of the library, because they're familiar, and as we tried to indicate, you know, it's not a huge man-hour time commitment, but it is a commitment, and we need your expertise. In addition to that, here's an opportunity for representing the north end of Lincoln County, and this is on the road committee, county road committee. We would love to have a north-end citizen participate in this. They only meet two or three times a year and help prioritize work on county roads, and we need a north-end voice at that table. So, if somebody wants to, either contact me, or we have information where you'd get the application, and it's on the county website under applications, would be helpful. Also, if you haven't noted and are curious about the VRD consensus builder program, there is a hot link on the city website, and I noted that there was an update as recently as June 4th. All you have to do is go to the city website, click, you can read minutes, who the people are, comments, and it's our way of making sure everybody sees what's going on. And then, just for information, I want the council to know that I have stepped forward and put forth with the mayor's conference, mayor's association in Oregon, in conjunction with Chinook Winds, a proposal that Lincoln City hosts, the mayor's conference, key word, proposal, not accepted yet, for either 2014 or 2015. That would bring 200-plus people to Lincoln City, and I've also spoken with the other mayors in Lincoln County who have agreed that it would be a good idea, and they would participate. So, we'll know later whether we've so anointed. With that...
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor.
With that, I have nothing else. Any last-minute stuff? We stand adjourned. Thank you.